The Monday, September tenth, two thousand twelve, South Bend Common Council is now on sessional rise for the invocation by Father Dave Portfeel. Both power heads and pray for God's blessings. We stand before you Holy Spirits, elected representatives of the Common Council of South Bend, aware that we gather here in your name. Come to us, remain with us, enlighten our hearts. Give us life and strength to know your will, to make it our own, and to live it in our lives. Guide us by your wisdom, support us by your power. You deserve justice for all, enable us to uphold the rights of others. Do not allow us to be misled by ignorance or corrupted by fear or favor. Keep us faithful to all that is true. As we gather in council, may we temper justice with love, so that all of our decisions may better serve the people and the city of South Bend. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the due to this life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of circumstances.
Dr. John Forte, read the roll, please.
Mr. Scott.
President.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Well, it sounds like Henry's here.
Mrs. Shay.
Here.
Dr. Furwick.
Yes.
Dr. Martin.
Present.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Y, who has sent Mr. Furwick.
Yes.
President Deere.
President, Mr. Forte.
Eight.
Present. Thank you, ma'am. Report from the Subcommittee on Minutes.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the August twenty-seventh, twenty-twelve meeting of the Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Derek Deeter, David Vernon.
Next motion, we have the number second.
A motion to stretch all favor of that. Any opposition? Seeing none, we will proceed to special business. We have a Unity Gardens update. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, President Deeter. I had opportunity to speak with Sarah, who has been a sole visionary for the Unity Gardens in South Bend area. And as we started with the Fella Square, I think that was our first venture together seeing eyes. And as it has grown and grew up into our community, there's an opportunity for the South Bend area, more so the Fella Square area, to see something that's really good and great. And so she called me and we talked about it, and I thought it'd be very good that there was a presentation to the Council. Because the inception, because the fifteen sessions, we participated as a city itself. I thought I'd be going to hear from her.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Your name and address for the record.
Dana Stewart. My address is one eight five oh six US Highway six, Washington, Indiana, four six five seventy-four.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again to the Council for letting me come. We have some new members that sound over both of you are familiar with Unity Gardens. And Unity Gardens' story originally talked about hungry people and connecting them to healthy food. But, the idea grew, and it grew because of this community. People connected with their passions through the Unity Gardens, and it's become something more, not about just people in poverty, not even just about food, but something better for our entire community. The Gardens, of course, always started with a vision of creating abundance of food. Because of abundance comes sharing, and I think we've done that with over forty open Unity Gardens, most of which are in South Bend. The mission has always been one of community health, a broader vision than just the physical health, which is obvious. People are supposed to eat healthy fruits and vegetables. However, people don't know what to do with the food when it's grown from the ground. So we're doing our education, teaching people how to grow food, teaching people how to eat in healthy ways. We've done ninety-six classes off for two thousand twelve. We also, though, are growing community health in different ways. Socially, as diverse people get together and grow together, sharing the value of healthy food, young and old no longer play in the same venues, rich and poor don't have access to the same opportunities because they're never in the same context. So we're growing social capital. And also, we're growing and revitalizing our community through gardens. When I originally talked about that four years ago, people thought it was a ridiculous concept to grow and revitalize communities. But now the date is in, that we increase crime, we increase neighborhood safety, increase property values, and green up cities just by using community gardens. What's most unique about Unity Gardens, of course, is that it's based on sharing. Most people are kind of thinking, well, it sounds like a handout. But if Abraham Maslow would talk, once you feed the hungry, they can then start concentrating on other activities. And we've seen it time and time again, where harvesters one year become helpers the next, teaching others on Unity Gardens, sharing recipes, giving what they have to offer, and becoming part of the society that's for good. So therefore, our motto, we're growing more than vegetables here, and more recently, growing together. So, why Unity Gardens? We are educating the community. Over thirty-six hundred people attended our classes in two thousand eleven, increasing local dollars and keeping them local by having a local sustainable food system, combating obesity, which right now, kids' obesity rate, over thirty percent, which is just ridiculous. Building neighborhoods, revitalizing denser community gardens, providing opportunities for folks to be part of a positive thing in the community. When we connect people to what's good, they can see themselves as powerful agents of change. And, most definitely, greening the city. So we do classes in educating. We do lots of classes. We have twelve Unity Gardens onsite at school. We have a junior master gardener program we launched this year, very successful. We even have adult classes that we'll do again. We seat between fifty and eighty people a week at our growing gardens classes. We even educate people in terms of entrepreneurship, jobs, publishing, et cetera, through our internship program. And we have, most recently, our kids' summer's program, which has been a very, very interesting way to connect neighborhood kids that otherwise wouldn't have anything to do with the gardens and with nature. So the software rendering is our central garden, and it shows our plan, and I know you have seen it before. So Phase One, Open Garden, is well-known, where we enjoy hundreds of volunteers and harvesters every single day during each season. That's the part on your left, the two-acre area where we just grow vegetables. Phase Two broadened that concept. Phase Two was the two thousand twelve initiative, where we did a native planting area, you see the kind of log at the bottom, where we're doing not only pollination areas, but also research where we show different forms of growing, direct till, cover crops, and zonae gardening. Above is what we call our educational area. We have a fenced area where we have funding to give sixteen folks, six families, class. And in those classes, guide them through the whole growing process, kind of an addition to our indoor growing class. Where we've enjoyed eighteen families, representing four different countries, developing almost a community on their own, and it's become our template for revitalizing neighborhoods. Then, you see at number seven there, is where we envision a greenhouse. Now it's time to take the Unity Gardens into four-season growing, aquaponics, and not lose the energy that we have out there. Our outdoor educational garden specifically, I wanted to show pictures of it, we have plots for growing food, we have four-age, we have kids' plots, family plots, we have a fenced area that then they can protect their harvest. And what ends up happening is they share them with the open gardens, which actually on the sharing shelf. So we're reaching out then to other neighbors who are already standing in line wanting their plots for next year. It is our new model for revitalizing neighborhoods. And our four-season growing, we want to go from season extending to four-season growing. So we've been working with a number of community partners to make that happen. And right now, we have an opportunity to bring dollars towards this project here locally. We have a Chase Bank voting contest on Facebook, and we were anonymously nominated as someone's favorite charity. Everyone gets to only vote once, and for their favorite charity, and the top hundred and ninety-six get ten thousand dollars or more towards the project. So we're asking people to go on Facebook, share their information, and vote for Unity Gardens. I have handouts also that have the linking information, but if you go and see Unity Gardens on Facebook, you'll find it too. So, supporting Unity Gardens, of course, joining our Facebook page helps. Certainly feel free to donate, we always need that. Volunteering, visiting our blog is very helpful, attending our dense gardens. The more people that are out there and see what we're doing, the better that is for all of us. And as community leaders, I would encourage you to see what's growing out in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for bringing that up.
Now, we're gonna need everybody to vote. We're trying to bring house, man. We got, we got both, man. Make sure you don't face, we got both.
Media.
Hey, we got both, media. We're trying to bring house.
All right, we already report to City Offices. Seeing none, ma'am, a motion to resign, we committee the whole.
Come on.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Committee of the whole is now on session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council sits as a committee. The chairperson of the committee of the whole will briefly review the governing procedures at future council meetings. Proposed ordinance are read by, entirely only by City President John Forte. Reports have been verbally given to the chairperson of the council standing committee, to which the proposed ordinance will sit for a rivalry and review of recommendation. At this time, we will now ask Mr. Forte to read Bill number thirty-two dash twelve.
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for a property located at fourteen forty-one North Michigan Street and west of fourteen forty-one North Michigan Street, Complimatic District number four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
A motion to hear thirty-two and thirty-three, gathered for purposes of public service.
A motion, second. You all in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All in favor of the same time?
And for the record, both of these are substitute bills.
Thank you. The committee hearing this afternoon was...
Thirty-three, twelve.
Thirty-three, twelve.
Public hearing on a bill amending zoning ordinance for property located at the right-of-way west of and adjacent to fourteen forty-one North Michigan Street, Complimatic District number four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Seeing now, committee meeting for the zoning and renovation committee was held this afternoon, and both of these bills are brought to you with a favorable report.
Kristen Nader with the Area Planning Commission offices on the eleventh floor. There are two petitions before you tonight. I just want to point out, there are also two petitions before the county council tomorrow night. This blue dotted line is the city boundary, so everything north and west of the line is county, and everything south and east of the line is city. So the two petitions we're voting on tonight are thirty-two, twelve, matches up with twenty-six forty-one, twelve, the yellow, and thirty-three, twelve, matches up with twenty-six forty-two, the green spot there. Again, is a better view of the site plan. The thirty-two, twelve, in San Joe High School building, and then this parking area, and thirty-three, twelve, is just this small strip of abandoned railroad right-of-way that was left over, but it's part of the parking lot. This again is the school from the corner of zero nine three three Angela. And then this is kind of the field area, and right where you see that, this crosswalk, that leads into what the railroad right-of-way area was. To the north is Holy Cross College, across zero nine thirty-three is the nerd and golf course. To the south, there is a neighborhood of single-family homes and some businesses around the southeast corner, I'm sorry, the southwest corner of Michigan and Angela. All of this property will be zoned U University in the end, whether in county or city. Before you are obviously going to be zoned to the U University district in the city. These bills come here with a favorable recommendation from the Area Planning Commission. The activities will be more or less to say they will still be using the building, they will still be using the parking athletic field, kind of together, using the parking for the building and athletic field, depending on the jurisdiction it is in.
Thank you. Any questions at this time, in the council? Representative? Please state your name and address, and a brief synopsis of what you are keen to do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Members of the council, my name is Rich Deal from Barnes and Thomburn, with offices at one hundred North Michigan Street here in South Bend. I'm pleased to join Tim Sexton, Associate Vice President of Public Affairs at the University of Notre Dame, and Richard Nussbaum, who is counsel for the Brothers of Holy Cross, to request your approval of the rezoning petitions before you tonight. I thank Ms. Nader, she did an excellent job describing the background of the project here. But in a brief summary, this project relates to the continued utilization of what has for the last sixty years been known as the Saint Joseph High School on the corner of Angela and thirty-one. A portion of that property, including the high school, and half of the athletic fields are within the city boundaries. So the, and this property is owned by two owners currently, which is the Diocese of Fort Wayne, South Bend, which owns the school and the fields, and the Brothers of Holy Cross owns the former abandoned railroad right-of-way that provides access to this property. All of this site is currently zoned as SF one, SF two in the city, which permits the operation of elementary, middle, or high school, but does not permit the use of this property for university-related administrative offices and other university laboratory or school rooms. Therefore, the University of Notre Dame, with support of the Diocese and the Brothers, are requesting the rezoning to U, the U University designation, to allow this property to continue to be used by the university and Holy Cross College for their university and academic-related purposes. We'd be happy to answer questions, and I know Mr. Sexton will provide some additional information for how the university intends, at this point, to use this facility, which is about a hundred and sixty-five thousand feet, to the extent it can continue to be to be used.
Thank you. Got this question, your case, name, address.
Good evening. My name is Tim Sexton. My office is four oh five, main building, University of Notre Dame. As Rich mentioned, the building is about a hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet. For the foreseeable future, the university would like to use that space as swing space, meaning that as we go through renovations and go through construction on campus and offices, people are displaced from their offices, this would be a perfect location for them to be housed. In addition to that, we are looking at using the building some for storage, and then also we do have one of our incubator businesses, a possibility, if you will, one of the business over Innovation Park, that's looking for a place temporarily, this could service that. Again, it would be approximately eight to ten thousand square feet of the hundred and sixty-five thousand. They would use it as administrative space plus research in that connectivity to the university. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Happy. Are there any questions for Mr. Sexton, Mr. Chairman, John?
Seeing none, let the audience know that we did have a meeting this afternoon again, so a lot of the questions were asked there. Seeing none, at this time, we will then open it up to a public hearing. Those who would like to speak in favor of this bill, please step forward and state your name and address. You have five minutes, per person. Seeing none, those who would like to speak in opposition, you can also step forth, you have five minutes. Seeing none, one stepping forth, then we will call the public portion and move back to committee and hold.
I have a legal question. Do I have to make a declaration? Just for being a reminder. I want to be ethically correct here.
You didn't graduate.
I move for favorable recommendation of thirty-two, twelve.
Substitute.
Substitute, thirty-two, twelve. All in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All in favor? Good. I move for favorable recommendation for substitute thirty-three, twelve.
Second.
All in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All right, it is carried. You're welcome. Mr. Forte, could you please read Bill number thirty-four dash twelve?
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at seven oh nine, seven eleven Lincoln Way East, South Bend, Complimatic District number two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. This afternoon, the zoning renovation committee met, and we bring Bill thirty-four, twelve, to you, in favorable report.
Kristen Nader with the Area Planning Commission offices on the eleventh floor. The petitioner is requesting a zone change from the MF one urban corridor multifamily district to SF two, single-family and two-family district, to allow a single-family home. The property is located in the Edgewater Place Local Historic District, the picture of the search property, and a picture of the looking kind of southeast along Lincoln Way, the property is behind that tree. To the north, a single-family home, zoned SF two, single-family and two-family district. To the east is a vacant lot, zoned MF one urban corridor multifamily district, and a house, zoned in Munich Field District. To the south, across Lincoln Way is a gas station, zoned CD, community business district. To the west, there are several vacant homes, zoned MF one urban corridor multifamily district. At the public hearing, historic preservation spoke in favor of this petition, and they also read one letter in favor, and the Area Planning Commission received another letter in favor after the public hearing had happened. Comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Planning Commission. The conversion of this property from multifamily to single-family is compatible with the goals of city plan and the Edgewater Place Local Historic District.
Thanks, Ms. Nader. Is there any questions from the panel? All right. Thank you. Now, we'd like to have the petition. Please come forth and state your name and address, and give us a brief synopsis of your program.
My name is Eric Ford, two five nine five two Northland Crossing, Arkansas, Indiana, two five, um, four six five. Four six five, sorry. The residence was, as you said, a apartment building, number one, transferring it over to a single-family unit, planning on being an owner in a flat.
Okay. All in favor? Any questions, comments, from the council? Seeing none, we thank you. At this time, we would like to hear from the public, so we open it up. So those who would like to speak in favor, please come forth and state your name and address. Seeing none, those who would like to speak in opposition, please come forth and state your name and address. At this time, the public portion on this bill is closed, we bring it back to the public council. Move for favorable recommendation. All in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All in favor? All righty, it is carried. Mr. Forte, would you please read Bill number forty-two?
Public hearing on a bill to vacate the following described property. The first north-south alley west of Notre Dame Avenue from Howard Street, south to the first east-west alley for a distance of one hundred and ninety-eight feet, and a width of fourteen feet. That alley is part of Soren's second addition to the city of South Bend, Portage Township, Saint Joseph County, Indiana.
Thank you. The zoning renovation committee, yeah? With the public portion.
The public portion of property vacation, committee has public hearings on Bill forty-one, two, this afternoon, and gives a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Nader. Now, we'd like to have a presentation or presenter. Please state your name and address, and give us...
Hello, my name is Scott Ketter. I reside at nine one nine North Notre Dame Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one seven. Thank you for your time. Yes, I'm here to, on behalf of my neighbors, we would like to vacate a portion of the alley that we discussed this afternoon. The alley is just south of Howard, and it's just the north portion of the alley. The goal, we have worked with the neighborhood to actually redesign the way that we enter the garages in the back of the alley, so that three of the alleyways have been poured with concrete to allow better access. And then the northern portion of the alley, where we have many children who are playing, and we would like to vacate for safety and security concerns.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from any of the councilmembers tonight? Thank you. Now, we will have a public hearing. Those in the public would like to speak in favor of Bill forty-twelve, please come forth and state your name and address. Seeing none, those who would like to speak in opposition, the same bill, please come forth and state your name and address. Okay? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Back to the council for your recommendations. Move for favorable recommendation. All in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All in favor? It is passed. Thank you. Good afternoon, to Bill forty-one dash twelve.
Public hearing on a bill to correct the legal description in ordinance one oh one four four dash twelve, which vacated the following described property. Several alleys, portions of alleys, and portions of Dewey Street, Burns Street, Georgiana Street, and Saint Vincent Street.
Okay. Before we proceed, we have some words from Mr. Furwick.
Just need to make a disclosure. I do own property in this general area. However, this is the correction of a scrupiner's error, and I've been advised by a counsel attorney, that this decision did not present a significant financial interest issue. And I also have a disclosure statement.
That means, yeah, that's true. All right. Mr. Dr. Um...
Public work for property vacation, had a public hearing on Bill forty-one, twelve, so you don't have to come back and do this again. It comes to council with a favorable recommendation for today.
Thank you, Mike Vance from the Edgewater, associate section forty-three, county manager in South Bend. This is basically just correcting a scrupiner's error. We have done before councils, this is up in the Triangle neighborhood, we had asked for vacation of several portions of street and alleys. There was a line left out covering a portion of Saint Vincent Street that ran from Burns, I'm sorry, from Burns to Georgiana, that area for Saint Vincent, was two hundred and forty-eight feet. We dismissed it in the legal description, so we're asking councils to basically go ahead and correct the scrupiner's error. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No questions? Seeing none, we thank you for your presentation, and we move now to the public portion. Those who would like to speak in favor of Bill forty-one dash twelve, please come forth. Seeing none, those who would like to speak in opposition to Bill forty-one dash twelve. Public portion is now closed, and we move back to the council for recommendations. For favorable recommendations?
Second.
All in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All in favor of the same time? It is carried. Thank you. Mr. Forte, would you please read Bill twenty-five dash twenty-two?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the year twenty-twelve.
Thank you. Substitute, Mr. Forte? All in favor? All right. All in favor? Okay, now, Mr. Forte.
He did. No, not the committee report.
Okay, fine. That would be...
No, that's a... Personnel, they had a public hearing on Bill, substitute Bill forty-five, twelve, today, budget transfer. And comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We have a question. Who's the next?
Good evening, council. I'm Mark, the operating controller with offices on the front porch of this building. Substitute Bill forty-five, twelve, is fulfilling our state's threshold requirement to request a public hearing, your approval for appropriation transfers for money being transferred between the departments, as listed in the attachments, as well as chances within classifications of the department, for your approval. If you have any questions, you can ask.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Questions for Mr. Neal that you would like to share or ask from the council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Neal. We're now giving the public. All, um, those in the public who would like to speak regarding this bill, please come All those who would like to speak in opposition of this bill, please come forth. Seeing none, we propose public hearing, and move back to the council.
Move for favorable recommendation of substitute forty-five, twelve.
Second.
All in favor of the aye?
Aye.
All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Mr. Forte, would you please read Bill forty-six dash one two?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in twenty-twelve of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars from general fund number one oh one, one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars from law enforcement continuing educations fund, the number two twenty, twenty-six... continuing education fund, the number two-twenty, twenty-six thousand dollars from loss recovery fund, number two-twenty-seven, forty thousand dollars from human rights grants fund, number two-fifty-eight, thirty thousand from police block grants, number two-eighty, and sixty thousand dollars from police drug enforcement fund, number two-ninety-nine.
Thank you.
This, uh, Mr. Chair, the, uh, public, or the personnel advance committee had a public hearing on substitute Bill Forty-Six Twelve this afternoon. It comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Have we had a motion to accept the substance?
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Thank you. It is carried. Mr. Neil.
Uh, let's just close here first.
I would like to disqualify that I'm a member of the South Bend Police Department since nineteen-seventy-eight and on the advice of our council attorney, I am able to discuss this matter and properly vote on it.
Thank you. Any other suggestions? All right, thank you. Mr. Neil.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Again, Mark, the city controller of offices in this building on twelve-fourth floor. Uh, so substitute Bill Forty-Six Twelve, uh, requesting additional appropriation, uh, from, uh, the general fund and the other funds as, uh, Mr. Fordy has outlined. Not in substitute bill, we did remove one-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars of the police, uh, grants. Those lines were actually transferred earlier and do not require additional approval.
Thank you, Mr. Neil. Council members, do you have any other questions or comments you'd like to share with Mr. Neil? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Neil. At this time, we are, uh, open up for public. Uh, those who would like to speak in favor of this bill, please come forth. Those who would like to speak in opposition of this bill, please come forth. We now propose public hearing and bring it back to the council.
Favorable recommendation of substitute Forty-Six Twelve.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. This bill carries. All right, thank you. Um, Bill Forty-Seven Dash Twelve. Mr. Fordy.
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in twenty-twelve of four-hundred-and-ninety thousand, four-hundred dollars from Water Works Depreciation Fund, number six-twenty-two.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the, uh, personnel advance committee had a public hearing this afternoon on Bill Forty-Seven Twelve that comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Um, Mr. Neil.
Thank you again. Thanks to come here for the third and final time. Bill Forty-Seven Twelve. As noted, this is for, uh, money, uh, from the enterprise fund for Water Works for two projects that were performed under the payment go fund. Those monies are being, uh, reimbursed through the recent Water Works Fund that was funded in June earlier this year.
Thank you, Mr. Neil. Any questions for Mr. Neil at this time, who would like to ask or share? Okay, thank you, Mr. Neil. At this time, we have a public hearing. Our public is now open, so come forth. Those who would like to speak in favor of this bill, please come forth. Those who would like to speak in opposition of this bill, please come forth. Public hearing is now closed and we bring it back to the council.
Move for favorable recommendations.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. This bill carries. Motion to, uh, come on. Second. Thank you.
Well, council is now back in session. First, John Fordy, so we go to the third reading of thirty-two, twelve.
Public hearing on a bill amending the, third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at fourteen forty-one North Michigan Street and west of fourteen forty-one North Michigan Street, Complimatic District Four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to amend it, it wasn't a committee of course.
Some move.
Okay.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
In the opposition. Now, Mr. Fordy, read the vote.
We need a motion to, uh, a motion for the passage of substitute, to add substitute Bill Thirty-Two Twelve as amended.
Second.
John, Mr. Fordy.
Uh, Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you, Thirty-Two.
Third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at the right of way west and in Jinxen Two, fourteen forty-one North Michigan Street, Complimatic District Four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
A motion to amend it, it wasn't a committee of course.
Some move. Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
In the opposition. Now, a motion.
Motion to approve amended Bill Thirty-Five Twelve.
To pass.
Pass. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to pass. It's good morning.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Scott.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thirty-four, twelve.
Third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at seven-oh-nine, seven-eleven, Lincolnway East, South Bend, Complimatic District Number Two in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move for the passage of Thirty-four, twelve.
Second. Fordy.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you, Mr. Fordy. Forty Twelve.
Third reading on a bill to vacate the following described property. The first north-south alley west of Notre Dame Avenue from Howard Street, south to the first east-west alley for a distance of one-hundred-and-ninety-eight feet and a width of fourteen feet. Said alley is part of Soren's second addition to the city of South Bend, Portage Township, St. Joseph County, Indiana.
Move for the passage of Forty-Seven Dash Twelve. Second. Fordy.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Forty-One Twelve, please.
Third reading on a bill to correct the legal description in ordinance one-oh-one-four-four-dash-twelve, which vacated the following described property. Several alleys, portions of alleys, and portions of Dewey Street, Burns Street, Georgiana Street, and St. Vincent Street.
Move for the passage of Forty-One Twelve.
Second. Mr. Fordy.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you. Forty-Five Twelve.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year twenty-twelve.
Move for the pass...
A motion to amend it, it wasn't a committee of course.
Some move. Second.
A motion to second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
In the opposition to that. Seeing that, may I have a motion to amend the version?
A motion for passage of the amended version of Forty-Plus Twelve? Second. Fordy.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Forty-Six Twelve.
In ordinance of the, um, let's see, third reading of, pardon? Third reading on ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in twenty-twelve of one-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars from general fund number one-oh-one, twenty-six thousand dollars from loss recovery fund, number two-twenty-seven, forty thousand dollars from human rights grants fund, number two-fifty-eight, and sixty thousand dollars from police drug enforcement fund, number two-ninety-nine.
A motion to amend it, it wasn't a committee of course.
Some move.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
In the opposition. I have a question on that. Um, did you have in there one-hundred-and-sixteen-three thousand? That wasn't read.
No, that was...
That was right. The one is changed.
The two items, they were changed.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay. Now, may I have a motion for the amended version of Forty-Six Twelve?
Motion for the passage of the amended version of Forty-Six Twelve?
Second.
All in favor of Mr. Fordy.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thirty-fourty-seven, twelve.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in twenty-twelve of four-hundred-and-ninety thousand, four-hundred dollars from Water Works Depreciation Fund, number six-twenty-two.
Move for the passage of Bill Forty-Seven Twelve? Second. Fordy.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you. Let's proceed to twelve-sixty-five.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the area board of zoning appeals for the property located at eleven-twenty-four through eleven-thirty, Napier Street, South Bend, Indiana.
Chair, I want to hear your amended version.
Uh, no, I need to read that into the record.
Okay.
Section four, to start the period at the end, and to add the following. Subject to written commitments proposed by the area board of zoning appeals on August first, two thousand and twelve, being promptly reported.
A motion accepted. Um, some move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition. Now, I believe today we should discuss the further candidates.
Mr. President, the zoning and adavation committee met this afternoon and we bring this bill to the full council in favorable report. Sir.
Mark Lanning, building department office on one-twenty-five South Lafayette Boulevard. Just given public hearing on August first, twelve, meeting of the area board of zoning appeals, there's a special exception request to allow accessory parking lot in the FF Two and Zone in the district. At that time, it received unanimous favorable recommendations, subject to a written commitment limiting the parking to the seven thirty-five feet of the property. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Yeah, sure. Um, I was alerted and when we were in the meeting, I think I was still handing to the last presentation, uh, there was a gentleman, um, he gave me, I had received a call for yesterday about this. Is this concerning the height of the fence that's out there?
Now, the, the fence is actually what came to attention of the fact the parking lot was, the property is already being used as a parking lot. That area is part of a design review district and the fence, if erected, did not meet those standards during the hearings about the design review district and that fence came to light that they were parking in that area. So, I thought the gentleman coming to report to council now correct by that parking situation.
Okay, well, the neighbors that I spoke with, when the guy that I spoke with, he had a huge concern with the way, uh, the aesthetics of the fence.
Yes, the fence as it exists today will largely be removed. Only the thirty-five feet in a special exception line up being what is fenced in. Uh, the fence within it personally has originally constructed around the entirety of that property.
Right, right, right.
But, yes, it will only be fenced in this thirty-five feet. The rest of it will be removed.
Question? Yes, sir. Do you know when that will be removed?
You got petition and generally we get thirty days once something like this would be approved.
Okay, well, thank you. All right. We have a petition, I'd like to give a short overview of this process. We need your name and address for us to record and tell us what you got going.
David T., I represent Army-Navy, eleven-twenty-one Western, and we agreed previous meetings to take down all the fence all the way up to Napier and just have the thirty-five feet just north of the alley. All the rest will be turned back, you know, they'll be gone, the fence.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Or opposition? Counselor. Move for the adoption of Bill Twelve-Fifty-Five. No further amendment. Second. Mr. Fordy.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you, Twelve-Sixty-Six, please.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving and adopting the Howard Park Neighborhood Master Plan. Vice President Davis.
Yes, Mr. President. Um, this bill, Twelve, that fifty-six comes for the full council with no recommendation.
Well, thank you. Uh, President, probably, was it just a synopsis of your project, sir?
Sure. Um, I have the entire presentation. Uh, if you'd like, I can hook that up.
You're welcome.
Good evening again. My name is, uh, Jatim Kane with Community Economic Development Offices on the twelfth floor of this building. I'm here today to present a resolution to adopt the Howard Park Neighborhood Master Plan and amend the South Bend Central Development Area Plan. Uh, this process takes, uh, four steps. It includes, uh, a resolution by the redevelopment commission to begin the process. This is a, uh, confirming resolution followed by air plan, by air plan adoption, and then today, council approval. Uh, after this step, we have to go back to the redevelopment commission, which then approves a confirming, um, declaratory resolution to, uh, uh, complete this process. Uh, the Howard Park Plan was, uh, developed by JJR, a quarter mile Chicago, in two thousand and nine. This process, uh, included, um, neighborhood residents, businesses, city officials, and several community stakeholders. Um, the plan, although completed in two thousand and nine, was not, uh, sent to the County Council and other bodies for adoption primarily because of two things. Um, one was the South Bend Central area, development area, did not include a big portion of the, uh, neighborhood. This changed, uh, in December of twenty-eleven. Uh, the second reason was the economic downfall. Uh, soon after the plan was complete, um, we were unable to really work with the development community on making some of those visions a reality. But we're here today to ask for your approval of this plan so we can amend the South Bend Central Development Area and make this really a market-driven strategy that allows the private sector to, um, um, uh, to invest in this neighborhood, allows the city to offer any support to the private sector if needed, allows the commission to offer any public infrastructure support if needed, but certainly provides a strategy, a common vision for the entire neighborhood. It, uh, um, also creates, um, a strong sense of, uh, community for the residents that live in there, for the businesses that have already invested. So with that, uh, unfortunately, we're having some, uh, audio visual issues, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions here, gentlemen or counsel?
Vice President Davis.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, my head's empty this afternoon because based on the issue that I have two weeks ago was that I had been not seen included, um, where you were going to clearly include some member of the city council as a part of the thinking body of this kind of a process, whether it be the district person, um, or that large person or something like that, um, to, for it to just be, even though I'm on the end, but, um, this is for different purposes, to just have council officials and others and not necessarily have anybody from this body here. I'm, I was very cautious about that because seemingly we come at, at the very last bit of, um, with all the thinking plans and, um, have to be presented the week before to make the decision that Monday on something really major, um, I didn't see any effort. I realized a couple of weeks to really push that into the thinking process, and so I would, um, love to vote for this, but that might hang up, and if we could include that somehow in the language or something, you have some much support of it.
Let me clarify that. Um, the transfer project is really a, a strategy in the plan. The plan recommends that the transfer project, uh, be implemented by the private sector. And so what you're seeing is a parallel process that's happening with the advisory committee formed. Uh, transfer has formed the advisory committee with five individuals, three transfer officials, one city and one neighborhood. Uh, I've communicated your concerns to transfer officials. It's up to them to appoint another, um, council member, but I would, I would separate that project from this plan. This is a vision for the entire neighborhood. The transfer site is a small portion of that. It's happening in a parallel way, I understand, but they are separate processes. But we certainly communicated that to, uh, the, uh, chairman of the transfer board.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Now?
Yeah, um, Jatim, I had some, uh, hands-on experience with this, just by participating in the East Bank Partnership Meeting, and, um, I understand, or I have developed an understanding that, um, this is definitely a, um, a paradigm shift for many of us in terms of how the city approaches development. So I think we're all kind of going through some growing pains with that. Um, but, um, I, I will echo, um, Councilman Jatim's concern, uh, because I have heard from, uh, members of the, uh, Neighborhood Association as well that they would like, um, some council representation on the steering committee. So, um, I would suggest, uh, that we consider that. Uh, the other thing that, um, I guess there are some existing concerns probably amongst council and maybe in the community is since we are approaching this in such a different manner to how we now approach development in the past, uh, there exist some concerns on, um, how much direction will we as a city really be able to provide on the ultimate, um, the outcome of this? Because it's, uh, at least with regards to the transfer site, do you, do you feel that we will really have, uh, the final say in what's developed there?
I believe the, uh, final say for the transfer site will be, uh, for the transfer board. They own the site, and they will need to make the final determination. But we certainly created a process that allows for council members, for residents, for businesses to be involved in the process. The RFP, uh, process is currently underway. We've, uh, uh, like I mentioned earlier, drafted a table of contents. That's how far we've gotten, really just initiated the process. But our hope is that as we write the RFP, that, uh, certainly the draft of the RFP will be reviewed by neighborhood residents, but that as developers submit proposals, that we can have them, um, come out in a public meeting, in a neighborhood meeting, where I would certainly invite all council members to attend, and then all the, uh, feedback that we get from that meeting can be taken to the advisory committee.
Um, so when the, when the folks come in, uh, from the RFP, traditionally, or I believe what happens is the board, public force, uh, when it's a city-related project, the board is public force.
Right.
So in this situation, the folks that come in from the RFP will be actually reviewed by the transfer?
They will be sent to transfer, yes. And then the transfer reps on the advisory committee will call a meeting, uh, public meeting, where, uh, developers can then, or, uh, can really present their ideas, and then it goes back to the transfer board.
And that will be a public, um, meeting, open call?
Well, that's, yes, that's what's being discussed right now.
Thank you.
Forty, twenty, uh, this is sir.
Thank you. That was, that's one of my biggest concerns. It seems like this is transfer project relevant in the city, and I, and I just have all apprehension on how do we design a plan with transfer, or how do we, I guess, uh, design a framework to, for transfer to operate in, what is their project? I don't know from to the, uh, to the understanding that they probably should be doing it on their own. I don't think necessarily we should be, like, talking about transfer and what they're doing. We do have now due to change of law oversight, but this obviously has been going on for some time, and so I, it's not necessary that it's, in past times, when we did these things, we never really talked about the private sector, perhaps. Now it's all of a sudden the private sector is in us, and that is like a lot of my apprehension on this. And it seems like the deck of, the deck of cards is stacked for what it is, you know? And we've, and I've seen other cities do that, and they've lost their hats on it. I mean, we can talk about downtown development over in Chicago with the condos, you know, Skyrise, they're just really hoping that London's going to be there, et cetera. Now they're using those rooms as if they're hotel rooms, just to get by. And you have all these empty structures that's there. They, they, they rent down project housing, some project housing, and, and in this case, it's not as extreme, but it's almost the same principle behind it. And what I'm getting at is I just really thought that we probably could pull ourselves out of the equation when we get to talk about it, because the transfer piece is a cornerstone, if we really talk about it. If that is what is going to drive whatever happens, right? So I, it's just a lot of apprehension on this end about what's going on, what's the transfer site. I can't get past that for the fact that, you know, we're talking about overall plan. And I hope that I'm, you know, obviously making any type of sense to you, but it's just one conversation, another conversation, keep going back to transfer, transfer, transfer. Now that's a different way of doing development, et cetera. Well, a lot of people that are putting the plan together are, are developers. So it was, it seems like that conversation should happen with them and not with us. You know, they're investing their own money. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And then so it's like we're going to do a minimal investment if, if necessary, but we've already spent fifty thousand dollars for a plan. But I know we spent fifty thousand dollars for a plan. It, it just seems like that we're saying that we're not working in concert, but we're, we're working in concert. It's like two different conversations going on, and that, and that's what I have a, the issue with, because let's be clear on what we're doing. Let's be clear. We're going to work with transfer to develop the site, and we're going to help fund this, uh, the project for, for infrastructure costs as a, let's say, the East Bank Village Plan or East Bank Plan. I'll be happy with that, but that's not what I'm hearing tonight.
And let me try and answer those questions, council member Davis. The, uh, uh, the plan is for the entire neighborhood. Transfer is a big part of that, certainly. The ten acre site was a big driver in creating this master plan funded by the redevelopment commission. Um, again, the strategy allows us to make decisions on not just the transfer site, but to help with decisions, uh, throughout the neighborhood. Um, uh, transfer certainly does not have the capacity or the expertise to draft an RFP, a development RFP. Um, our office, Community Economic Development, is involved in a number of development projects throughout the community, and so as a way of elaborating on this process to offer support, um, we offered to help with drafting the RFP. Um, certainly, this is a key part, um, like you said, for, uh, development in the neighborhood. If the transfer project takes off, that will help, uh, be a catalyst for other projects in, in, in the entire neighborhood, and we certainly want to see that because it's, it'll be great for the community, great for downtown, to have homeless, in fact, close proximity to downtown, uh, in close proximity to, uh, the new St. Joe High School, I think is a great thing. And the process that we, uh, uh, worked on a few years ago included the development community, included officials, included, uh, uh, several council members at the time. Um, so it was a very collaborative process that created this, uh, strategy for the neighborhood. So we're really asking for your approval of this broad vision for the entire, uh, neighborhood, the Howard Park neighborhood.
Okay. Um, what then is this obviously going to be, sort of residential, um, the way that makes use perhaps of more residential? Where are we attracting this population of people from?
Um, those are, sorry, those are, uh, that's a great question. Uh, we have heard paragonally from a number of people that there's a, uh, desire to live closer to downtown. This is not just, uh, uh, local, but we're hearing this nationally. Uh, in many communities throughout the country, there's a desire to live closer to downtown, to urban centers. Um, and you're seeing that in phase one. Phase one of this master plan, which you, the council approved, um, is being implemented. Uh, you've seen a couple of projects happen on the Rink site, on the, uh, the Trager site. These are residential developments that were envisioned in phase one of the master plan are happening by the, the private sector. So we're seeing things happen. We're seeing people buy those, uh, uh, townhomes. Many of them are, uh, folks either employed in downtown or people moving from Granger, and I think that's a trend we're seeing, uh, nationally and certainly, uh, hearing about here.
Have we stayed the model, uh, that's taking place in Mission Walker? Because those condos, those, uh, homes in that area, I mean, basically tried to do the same thing. As a matter of fact, I think they have more, more of the restaurant, you know, diner feel, you know, within small stores. And they have, now have the opportunity to attract those we were talking about right now. And I was just wondering, given their failed attempt as of right now, what is our, what are, are, are chances? I mean, there is Long River. They already have the homes that are built. I'm not trying to buy them, even if I'm not opening them, but I'm just, you know, imagining, uh, apples to apples.
Sure.
So.
The key is to find a really smart developer who knows what the market is, what the market will support, and the price points of the market will support. Uh, my understanding of the condos in Mission Walker was that they were overpriced. They also came online around two thousand eight, two thousand nine, in the economic downturn, when no one wanted to buy condos downtown. So the key is really, uh, understanding the market and having, uh, selecting a smart developer who knows what type of homes, single-family townhomes, small, large, to develop on the transfer site.
General? Sure. Um, just want to say appreciate the efforts of, uh, both Neighborhood Association as well as the neighbors, uh, involving the plans. Uh, happy to support their vision, uh, for this area. Also, just appreciate your efforts to redevelopment, to work with transfer, while the city council, development community, truly craft this vision, uh, that, again, is, is flexible, but at the same time, just really takes into account the input of the, uh, Howard Park Neighborhood Association, I was there last week, and they appreciate your efforts, too.
Thank you. Yes.
Jatim, is this resolution, um, to endorse private sector development with minimal or no city dollars to increase, to provide for an increase in property taxes overall in the end?
Essentially, it is, yes. The goal is to encourage private sector development with little public sector investment, and if you read through the plan, it talks about city investment would follow private sector development in this neighborhood. That's the strategy. So there's a need for the city, to the commission, to say, support new sidewalk or curb for a private development project that will be heard by the commission and, uh, considered by the commission.
And if the fail, it's a tax fail, we're not, you know, the, uh, the private developer that fails.
That's right.
Correct. Thank you.
Um, one of the reasons you heard me, is that I've been asked about, um, two weeks, is because I think some of the issues can be clarified when the, um, leadership of transfer comes and makes the budget, um, report, um, to the council. And I think I, this afternoon, I asked for a few minutes of that to, um, share, for, for them to be able to share some of the concerns and issues and questions that the council members may have. Um, if we were to delay this for two weeks until that's heard, if anything would be clear, would that be a problem, anything, or what happens?
Do you have to hear from the administration?
Um. I think the only reason I say that and ask you that is, um, so all the questions and concerns regarding this transfer is a part of it. We can hear from people who have made, um, John Lusinski and others, that they can possess their piece of it and everything. So when this is, resolution is fully passed, everybody can, um, embrace it and support it, and something like this really needs to, uh, support everybody in a form of understanding of everybody's, of our aspects of it, and not just pieces of it.
Okay.
Councilmember Shea.
Yeah, um, Jatim, and this is a bit of a follow-up. Uh, Scott Ford had presented, uh, last week on the, um, Community and Economic Development Department and perhaps some of the new, um, goals and visions of the department. And I can't remember the exact ratio, but, um, maybe you or Scott and I can have a mistake. Um, your vision for, um, development, uh, going forward is, um, a highly leveraged position where, um, city, city dollars for private development dollars. Um, this is an example, I think, of, of that vision. Um, so would you or Scott be able to speak to, uh, what your vision would be in terms of city for private dollars? What sort of leverage you would like to see in this example?
Um, I, do you remember those figures?
I think, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, you had said something like a one to fifteen. I can't remember. Uh, and I'm sure each scenario is, is different, but, um, as the director of, of the department, you had talked about, um, the, the, uh, various different ratios of how you'd like to see, um, leverage city for private investment, and I think this is an example of that. So would you be able to speak to what kind of leverage you'd like to see? I hope that makes sense. I mean, just, the question makes sense.
Scott Ford, Community Economic Development Office on the twelfth floor. Um, I believe you've complimented Shea that, uh, referring to two different things. One was the KPI related to the budgets. We talked about, um, a private development for public dollar.
That's right.
That was about roughly around fifteen percent, about, um, one to six point five. Um, and that was an target, but that separates from, is related to, but, but necessarily specific to, uh, a real, real estate project, uh, at Howard Park. So that's just, in general, we look at, um, in the aggregate of, you know, tax, the public contribution to things like tax evasion or debt funding, you know, in a project, looking for that type of leverage.
Okay. Sorry, my misunderstanding.
No, no problem at all.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, you want to weigh in back again? Okay, first of all, the, uh, the land that you're talking about, that's, it's no city land is involved, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. Secondly, if thi- if this did pass the council tonight, there's nothing legally binding that a developer would have to adhere to anything you're talking about with the master plan.
Um, no, and I do want to clarify that we're not talking about the transfer site today. I mean, the transfer site is one of seven strategies in the plan. There are several other strategies, and we're expecting the private sector to not only address the transfer site, but also address some of the initial sites. But again, this is a guide for the private sector to make an investment.
Right. I didn't say the entire, I just said the entire site. Anyone could do anything, basically. They want it. In our layer of votes, there's nothing to be done. And again, it's not to discount all the work you've done and all the people in there, but I just want everybody to be clear that if this did pass and someone comes in there and builds something that we don't like, there's not a lot we can do because we voted for the project, correct?
If it's, uh, a residential development, uh, that's, you know, the plan allows for that. Most of the properties that are already zoned residential now.
Right.
There are some industrial sites, if there's a rezoning of those industrial sites to, say, an office building. That's where the council can refer to the plan and say, the plan envisions primarily residential development.
I understand, but I didn't ask about zoning changes. If somebody came in there and put something that it was already zoned as, there's basically nothing that we have the power to do, correct?
Uh, not at this present council.
Correct. Okay. That's why I just wanted to clarify that for everything I'm talking about. Again, it's nothing to do with all the work that you guys have done. I just want everybody to be clear that this is kind of a layer of, like Councilman Davis was speaking about, that I don't even know why we're really part of it, but this is what it is as that. Uh, Dr. Viner.
The, the problem, my concern, Jatim, is, is the, uh, and I know a lot of people for a lot of time in every, and, and jolly people will get involved in something, and, and once they have an idea, and once it goes to step two or step three, everyone takes ownership in it, and sometimes it's difficult to walk away, to step back from that, that ownership. Um. Uh, my, a piece of property like that, however well-intentioned all the meetings are, I think deserves the highest and best use. And the highest and best use, uh, also generally confers a, a financially successful project. Um, highest and best use from a city's perspective would be minimal investment, from my perspective. The developer would pick up the cost, knowing that their return was going to justify it. And so I wonder if, if perhaps a project that we have scoped out here is, as it's drawn up, and it's going to be presented, that's going to be RFP, it's so restrictive in its nature that the only response we will get from people who are willing to build that are RFP, because they know there is so much city support coming, as opposed to a, uh, developer who would look at it and say, well, we can do condos and single-family and some other stuff. Um, it doesn't meet your plan. I don't want to rule out that sort of thought on this by someone who has, uh, their own money to invest and be, uh, would be willing to go back and work with the neighborhoods and find something to, to with that. I'm afraid we're drawing a, a, a line which points only to this project and the RFPs we get back, or the responses to the RFP will only address this project. But I'm afraid that's only the greater cost for the city, because along with that, RFP will come expectations of city contributions. Now, I expect we will have to make some. I just don't know whether highest and best use, uh, whether it would be necessary under highest and best use. That's the concern I have now. If it's addressed in two weeks, I think it's a request. Uh, if, if transfer is willing to invest or take a stake in the ownership, you know, maybe that would limit the city's expenses. So I, that's my concern at the time, not to the mission, or to, to the efforts thus far.
Um, you know, I, I know it's a plan, and, you know, a plan is the model within it, and I guess my one question is, um, are your RFPs going to be written exactly to emulate this plan?
Um, we're trying to create an RFP for the transfer site, um, in a very flexible manner. So we reference the plan as a guide, as a vision, but not a mandate, that we ask developers to, to look at the broad vision for the neighborhood, to then submit their own proposals for the development of the transfer site, and understand that their vision might be a little bit different than what's in the plan. And I do not believe that the plan in its current sta- state, uh, uh, would not allow something, uh, slightly different to happen. Um, the plan, again, is a broad vision, which calls for residential development, and it, it does look at different lots and tells you what should happen there, but if, I mean, you look at the, the transfer site and developers want more higher density because that's what the market will bear, then that's a decision that certainly the transfer board can, can make.
You know, I guess it's all well and good that you get our endorsement, but I kind of agree that, you know, we can't hold anybody accountable, and, but have you gone to redevelopment and got their endorsement in the city and? and got their endorsement in the city and everybody else? So if this comes back and doesn't work out, it's not entirely, but it's everybody else on board.
Yes, we've gotten the redevelopment commission's endorsement. This process began with the commission. They initiated the master plan, they paid for the master plan, and, uh, this resolution was first presented to the redevelopment commission, then it was presented to the plan commission today, coming to you. It will go back to the redevelopment commission for final approval. And so until the redevelopment commission approves it, this plan is not a formal addition to the downtown central development area plan.
I'm lost right now. Okay.
So, but, but to answer Councilman, uh, Scott's question, the, uh, what you just shared there was redevelopment approved the idea, but not, this, this plan has not been approved by them.
No, they've, uh, they will approve it with a continuing resolution after the council approval.
So you have sort of the idea, the whole concept, I mean, it's been out there for a while.
Yes.
Yeah, we understand that. But back to your, back to Councilman Scott, this plan has not been approved and endorsed by anybody else. It's just the concept, the idea. That's what I'm saying.
So that's the thing is.
Hold on. Okay, you guys good though? I just want to hear you not, back to what he's saying.
All right, I'm good.
You're good?
You're good?
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. It feels like I'm already endorsing the RFP, period. I know you said that's not it, but that's my feeling at this point. Uh, it made about here, the letter of it, the spirit of it is that we're endorsing the RFP, uh, for transport to go and, and, and look for, uh, a possible developer that may possibly redevelop the area. And what I do know by saying redevelopment, this probably never come back before the council again, because all the infrastructure, uh, costs will probably go through the redevelopment. And as a result, it's going to look like we did it and have prepared and failed, but let's say it doesn't take off like we wanted to. We get the blame for it, was I ever, ever had an opportunity to set the table while the plans are being developed. And that is where I was trying to flesh out earlier, but now I'm there, and that's what makes me very apprehensive about this, because it looks like that we're RFP, we're, we're saying thumbs up on RFP and not the plan. Past times, I think that this has probably have got, you know, uh, misinstrued with some of my colleagues, but past times, we, when we adopted the plan, we adopted the plan. We didn't talk about RFP, we didn't talk about developments we're working with, none of those things ever came up, not at all. Now, sometimes we ended up in a situation that we were out more money than we looked for the city, but we never talked about those things in the interim, okay? And that is what I do understand and we think about the process of planning, right? It was, we planned and then we go and look, but it seems like they were looking while we're planning, or have looked, and then let's develop this plan. And that is what makes me apprehensive.
That's exactly why I'm, I'm asking, and I'm finally asking for another two weeks, so we can get some, I mean, decent some studies and, and nothing that we have, I mean, I like to see things go, I mean, from both of my roles, but I personally don't think that everything from transport, with all due respect to this committee, has been completely shared to the satisfaction and understanding of the council, where they have clear understanding that what our role is in this process, why are we in this process, and, um, who takes responsibility for what, and all those types of things. And like Councilman Davis said, this is really our last time of having some input on this, because once this thing goes, it's gone. And, um, the, um, idea of us having some input afterwards tonight is going to be difficult. That's why two weeks ago, I was saying that we, as a council, need to have a role in this, because oftentimes we get down to the last minute and then we have to do this, and then when it's reported in the paper, it says, the city approved this, and everybody thinks it's us, they don't think my redevelopment commission blessed their hearts, it's us, and we have to take the heat for that. And that was the concern, why is that we have to have a vital role in this process? And since, um, transport will be here in two weeks, at least have some conversation with them in the afternoon meeting, that can help clarify this, but by the time you get to this portion of the meeting in two weeks from now, a lot of this will be cleared up.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Counselor Porsha is done, now.
A motion to, uh, refer back to the zoning announcement committee and continue to check.
You see, good with that.
Absolutely. Look forward to the conversation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposition.
Um, to me, um, at, once and can, um, Jaden, afterwards, can we, just one second, let me get a clear, a plan, something.
Okay, first reading there, Mr. Fordy. Forty-eight twelve.
Forty-eight twelve. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at sixty-four twenty U.S. thirty-one South, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-four, Complimatic District number six in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Who would this go to the air client commission?
Mr. Fordy, second, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposition, thank you. Forty-nine twelve.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting, and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's twenty thirteen budget, and levying the tax and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty thirteen.
Who's, uh, forty-eight twelve, go first on finance, because that's the second, third reading the public hearing on nine twenty-four.
Your motion is second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
The opposition, thank you. Fifty-twelve.
First reading on availability in the zoning ordinance and requesting a special exception for a property located at twenty-two twenty-two West Washington, Complimatic District two in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Who would this go to the air client commission?
Second. Mr. Fordy, second, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposition, thank you. Fifty-one twelve.
First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance and requesting a special exception for property located at twelve forty-three and twelve forty-seven Campoe, Complimatic District four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Who would this fifty-one twelve go to the air client commission?
Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
The opposition to that. Thank you. Any unfinished business?
Yes, please to be. Um, there was, we had a community meeting, um, while we were down, and we had the mayor invited, um, um, the, uh, the politicians that would be having this police, um, um, community meeting. Um, could you please, or refresh me, what was the, I know it's coming up soon, what's the time for that, um, um, uh, public meeting?
Uh, Dan, I don't know. I don't know if, I mean, I'm, 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 Uh, still with taxpayer dollars being allocated to something that's pretty much an issue. So, uh, the good thing is they are making improvements and, uh, hopefully going forward this will, uh, not be an issue. And we're still staying on topic.
Right, thank you. Sir, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Leader. Uh, two things, sir. I have, uh, a matter at hand with the, uh, CSO Network on Elwood Avenue. Uh, the whole area where the, uh, where the cell academy is at. And, um, they get your phone calls and begin a lot of phone calls. And, uh, I spoke with Toy Villa, uh, as well from the Public Works Division. Uh, however, I've seen the things I've gotten so far out of whack. I mean, they take some time and put it back together. However, and what I'm talking about is the safety issues that concern that area. There's sidewalks that are missing, uh, Nisko was over there. They ripped out like a whole half a block of the sidewalk. You have curbs and different things missing, neighborhoods in disarray, obviously because of the new sewer project. However, some of those things that are, uh, out of line, probably shouldn't be out of line. Um, there's also trucks traveling and parking in areas that probably shouldn't be traveling parking on. Uh, new pavement has been put down on Elwood. Uh, they're traveling down this new pavement and now you can see, you know, dips in the side and in the asphalt at this point because of the heavy vehicles that are going up and down. Obviously, someone has to go back to it and repay that. Uh, there is just a number of issues that are not really looking good. I do have a list of the contractors, however, I would like to go about this in a different way. So hopefully we can get together with those in Public Works and go on a better conclusion. Uh, we've had a similar situation in Kennedy Park that was nasty. And I, I just don't want to repeat the same, uh, thing. So if we can get a handle on this, and I know Mr. Gilat is in the bag, uh, uh, Mayor Booty Judge as well. We need to get a handle on this before it gets, uh, uh, get even more out of whack than what it is. So it's been going on all summer long, uh, but I think it's gotten to, you know, a, a breaking point at this time. So, uh, I'm asking for your participation in making sure that the area gets picked up and people can get back to their normal lives, uh, as much as they can during construction phase. The second part, and, um, and this is just me, uh, petitioning the council. Um, I'm, I'm going to ask because I understand what is probably getting ready to take place. Uh, and, and, uh, residents of the community have been very diligent. I think they have, uh, done a great job of petitioning the council. And, uh, we, we had to add on our last council meeting with, uh, the Jaheva Square, uh, issue. And as a, as, as a way of getting to a point that I think will, uh, give resolution and, uh, possibly some satisfaction as much as we can, uh, to the community, but also to the family members. I'm going to, uh, ask, uh, council, we may not have to discuss it tonight, uh, but maybe at a later date. But more so with, uh, with a better understanding. Uh, the stories that have been given obviously conflict with, uh, the, um, uh, with prosecutor's office. Uh, we've got several stories, uh, we've got several stories from those in the public. And, you know, obviously the media reports their story as well. I'm not saying anyone's fault, but what I am saying is that what, what happens is that, uh, it's going out into the, into the atmosphere. And so what happens when it goes into the atmosphere, we can't control it. Uh, we really can't even harness it. And to give again a resolution, satisfaction, I'm going to ask the council, uh, uh, on coming again and talk about, uh, defining probably a special investigation for these two situations. And one of my ironies, uh, points out right now for you, that's the reason why I'm asking for these things. Uh, I think number one, the rushed conclusion about a police chief prior to the investigation was completed, stating what actually took place, uh, with Mr. Anderson. The various conflicting reports, including initial reports that Mr. Anderson initially had one bag of marijuana and then the file report was three bags, including the residue of cocaine, uh, gives some call for social attention. Uh, the admission and denial of certain pieces of evidence in the discounting and discrediting of witnesses accounts is quite disturbing as well. The content and persistence stir around the tape has created much distrust and a manageable diminished credibility and confidence in the police department of the city as a council as well. And what I want to say about our police officers, all our police officers are not bad. They are not. I think our, we have some great police officers. And what I'm asking for is that we can grade ourselves of those who potentially could be the bad police officers among our good police officers that had a perception of being the police officers rather than feeling like all of them are bad. Number four, we should investigate whether all police procedures, policy, and both of us are filed and ha- and adhere to whether or not it's contributed to the death of Mr. Anderson. And also, uh, Mr. Vaque- Vaque. Number five, we have the executive authority here to see charged a launch in special investigation to assure the public we serve that we regard the loss of lives as a high priority. And though we may not agree with the findings, we may agree with the findings, but we're seeking out the truth. And so I don't know, um, is that the question is for the council right now? I'm going to apply a bit to ask for right now. However, I'm putting it on the floor for us to discuss it so that we can, uh, possibly, uh, get some satisfaction and some resolution to, uh, our community, uh, our officers as well, and also the council.
Thank you. Okay, first, number one, how, how do you want to proceed? Do you want to have a, a meeting in regards to some of the infrastructure problems on Elwood? How do you want to, how do you want to handle that?
Um, I hope that we don't have to do that, and that's what I'm saying. So I'm, I'm asking the pleasure of the administration right now, uh, what do you guys think? Is that something that, that is plausible?
So I, I, if you, if I could suggest, you send a, uh, an email to Mr. Gilat expressing what the issues are and Mr. Gilat will get back with you and then report to the council.
Sure.
Probably at the next, at our next meeting, that'd be great.
I can handle that.
As far as number two, if you want to put, because there was some different issues that you alluded to, put that down. First of all, I think it would be relevant for our attorney to look and see the parameters of what the council can go to. Uh, each of those, some may be addressed to, uh, somebody to the prosecutors, some may go to the police department. So send what your concerns are, those five points to Kathy, and then what gets dissected to possibly go to the prosecutor. If not, everything, this will finally go to Dr. Furley's committee under Health and Public Safety that we would have a discussion on some of those points, and then we'll, for you.
I can handle that.
Okay, cool. All right, any unfinished business? Yes, sir?
Well, my, my business.
Okay, un, unfinished, any unfinished? New business?
Yes, sir. I just want to invite, um, council, administration, and audience to, um, the Run Village, uh, park. Um, this is coming Saturday from one o'clock to five. We'll be eating, having fun, getting to know the neighbors. Yeah, this time after last year, I got painted all up. And so therefore, um, we're going to get painted up again this week here. So those of us who would like to join us in painting all these other good stuff and food and drink and all of this stuff, we can come and just get a chance on Saturday from one to five to enjoy the neighborhood and meet everybody and fellowship. So right there in the park, um, the Run Village Park, right across, across the field. And so if you vibe around the neighborhood, you'll see all the signs there. So come, bring your appetites and enjoy yourself.
Their admission price to that.
Just show up.
Absolutely. Okay, what's yours? Thank you. Also on the new business tomorrow night at the crack center, I believe at six o'clock, there will be a town hall meeting held by Mr. Andrew Beland and the Silverhawks discussing community input of what you would like to see at the ballpark. They had a, a very successful season, a lot of good things going on, uh, around the coast. So you guys know, is that at six o'clock tomorrow? Do you guys know the time on that? I would still have you in the favor, so I would assume five, five to six o'clock at the crack center tomorrow. All right, then. Privileges of the floor. At this time, you have up to three minutes to think about something that was out on the agenda tonight. You may go up to that microphone, we gave your name and address. If there's something specific that you'd like this council to follow up with, there are sheets of paper at Mr. Booty's, the school guy. If you want us to look into something that you have an issue with, please sign that form. That will be signed to committee and someone will get back to you. Otherwise, you're up for here to vent what you want to vent about and no one will follow up with you if you do not sign that form. So everybody get clear on that. If you want something for us to follow up, you need to follow, file a form. Give you one minute. Mr. Scott?
No, nine eleven.
Oh, the court, court, okay, thank you.
Go. Jesse Davis, thirteen thirty-three East Calvert Street, South Bend. Um, I have a couple of issues. Uh, number one, obviously, you can all see I'm kind of, uh, wearing a box today. We brought a few boxes with us, uh, basically symbolizing our concern that our mayor, who was elected to, uh, handle business here in the city, you know, received a box from an important place like the Department of Justice and basically says, hmm, this might be chafed, I'm not sure. Can you go put this away somewhere? I'll look at it later. We, we hear through the news media that, you know, there was no correspondence with this box, no letters. Then all of a sudden we hear that, hey, the Department of Justice not only sent a fax, which could in fact maybe get lost on the phone line, but they sent an email. I'd be real curious for an IT person to look at Mr. Booty Judge's computer and Mr. Roses from here and find out if that email did in fact arrive. If was it opened and was it deleted by someone? And if some who, I'm also told that within the box that we can't open, you might find a copy of that same letter. But since our mayor failed to do his job and open that, he doesn't know if it's a letter regarding the tape or maybe it could be some information that the Department of Justice knows that there might be a terrorist that's out coming. We won't know that till after it happens because guess what? This box is in a safety deposit box that the mayor doesn't know where it's at. I have a big problem when you get these types of things going on in your city and the mayor decides, hey, let's me and my people take off and go North Carolina for a vacation at the Democratic Convention. So you try to contact the mayor, you can't get a hold of him, but you can get a hold of Mr. Schmull. And who's running our city? Who's taking care of things on the air? Um, we, we get back to the issue of some of the things going on within the police department and what is on these tapes. Um, I hear that Mr. Corbett, I guess, on the day that two people were shot and killed on Olive Street, had a confrontation, a verbal confrontation over the phone with a dispatcher. I guess he used some pretty bad language and, uh, you know, said things to this poor woman that shouldn't even be said to another man. Uh, I've asked a few questions from some people about what's going to happen. Uh, because of Mr. Corbett acting this way once again. And I was told today that basically, you know, he was on duty, he was doing his job, so there wouldn't be anything done about it. Um, I got a little problem with that. I mean, uh, to me, it doesn't matter who is on the job. That man should be respectful to everyone, not only citizens, but especially the coworkers that he has to work with. And this conversation was also recorded.
Carry your time, sir.
Okay, I'd like to know if we can get a copy of that recording.
Hi, I'm Jim Monty Anderson, seven nineteen West Ewing. I'm Michael Anderson, I'm glad, and I do have some concerns with, um, this administration, police department, prosecutor's office. How one day we can get on the TV and say that Mr. Anderson died by accident and this so-called straw does not exist, this so-called tear does not exist. And if he died choking on a bag of marijuana, then three weeks later you have a press conference where a man and several other people were here and, um, it changed the whole story. Um, he was never, he wasn't even under arrest. Y'all had, y'all had a, uh, hour-long meeting showing his property pictures, which seem like that violated his civil rights, even though he's not even alive, but it violated my civil rights. That was my son, showing insides and whatnot. And then all of a sudden they admit, oh, yeah, there was a straw. And yeah, there was a tear, but hey, if I was choking, it wouldn't matter what somebody's got down my mouth as long as it helped me, but it did, y'all. It hurt, it made the situation worse, if that's the case. So, um, that gives me some concerns. It seems like you guys would want to know the truth about really what happened because the community do. And, um, as much as I like y'all, I'm tired of coming down here and seeing your face. But I'll be back and I'll be back until something gets done. And, um, I agree with Mr. Davis, if y'all can agree to agree to get together so we can finally what the truth is, so we can put this to video. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight Diamond. South Bend, Indiana. South Bend, Indiana is not a dying city, it's a lying city. How did Mr. Michael Anderson really die? What South Bend police officers used this straw? Was it really marijuana or cocaine? Why can't we hear or see the video and audio from Calvert Street? Don't their chest mics record when the lights are turned on? Why did it take South Bend police so long to admit they used that straw? If this case is truly closed, why hasn't Mr. Anderson's personal property and belongings been released from Metro Homicide? If all of these questions can't be answered, why is this case closed? I'm standing here because I'm concerned about the community. Mr. Anderson is gone. His parents are here and they're coming, but we need some answers. Why is this case closed? This is a straw from seven eleven that was stuck down his throat. It comes with a toy on it. The toy was taken off and this is stuck down his throat. I don't know any doctor, not the front few up here. If I begin to choke, we put this down my throat to try to save me. Accidents happen. I work as a foreman, a supervisor, accidents happen. Then after the case is closed, it comes out to say this straw was used. Now, how do we rest this case? Did we come to say it was an accident? When we look at Mr. Corbett over homicide, he tells the family, well, it wasn't marijuana, now it's cocaine. But you have the reports, the taxi reports, we have all this equipment that we have asked the city council board to give money for to record, but we can't hear the recording. Our mayor sits back here, he don't want to open the box. You either a thoroughbred or a loaf of bread. If you couldn't handle that office, get out of the office. Man, I'm about business. I come here for a reason. I didn't come here, it's not about show, it's about concern. This community is Torah. I live in the community, I see the community, I preach in the community, I walk in this community. And if all these questions can't be answered, there's no way this case should be closed. And we came as people to stay in concern. And I've told this council board, and I'm going to continue to tell you, it's not a black thing, it's not a white thing, it's a right thing. And if we can't wake you up, we're going to shake you up.
This is fifteen Jacobs, five two nine, forty two Camilla Drive. To the ci- to the city council board members and executives of South Bend, Indiana. The concerned citizen of South Bend would like to give a special thanks to this board for all you have done thus far concerning all our concerns and suggestions. On the other hand, we are quite tired of the issue involving the tapes and all of the unanswered questions we have asked in regards to Mr. Michael Anderson's death being ignored. At this particular time, we would all like to note what steps that the board is going to make in building South Bend, Indiana's new concept. We would like to see transparency, honesty, loyalty, unity, and dedication put back in our city. Sincerely, the citizen, concerned citizen of South Bend, Indiana. And I would like to add, before we start this meeting, we always say the prayers of allegiance. And at the end, we always say, with liberty and justice for all. And I would like to say, where is the justice? Where is the justice? And if where there's no justice, there's no peace.
Senator Brown, two two two, East Navarre Street, South Bend, Indiana. Representing citizens united for a better government. And, uh, we come down here every week after the council to help us get justice in our city. I got a letter from, uh, my boss back from the justice department and I was afraid to open it too. So when I did, I had the X-ray. It wasn't a letter, y'all.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Jones. I'm in binders, forty two twenty-four Irish Hill Street, South Bend, Indiana. Uh, I'm here because my son, Jahav Vaque, this wife is seventeen months since I lost my son. So a parent, um, suicide, so I'm hanging on an electrical tower up here in South Bend, Indiana after getting into a fight with two white boys they can. Um, I think, uh, section investigation does need to be done because it involved a fight, it involved ten high schools. Um, it could be five players, I don't know. But I know when I went to view my son's body, I know what they said it was my son hung himself with. It does not match just the marks on his neck. And I'm here for justice and I need peace for me and my, for the, me and my family, the Jones Vaque family. My son was a loving person. He was a Christian person. Um, he loved everybody. He had lots of friends. I came, I tried to take his life after six weeks from coming from Renaissance in Jennifer, Tennessee, where you have over two hundred thousand kids that got to deserve God. I need justice. And I was told I couldn't see the picture. And I think anytime I should be able to see the picture, if you're not covering up anything.
Yeah, uh, my name is, uh, John Kennedy. Uh, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Scott. Uh, uh, I'm here to say that, uh, that there needs to be an investigation about this because it was just ridiculous what she had to go through about this person sent by herself. No investigation. They ruled, uh, he chilled himself, uh, 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 you know, he chilled himself. That was ridiculous. And so I'm not here to condemn nobody. I just, we just want an investigation about this thing, about somebody chilled this boy. And so it's a, let's say about ten, about some real ugly stuff. I'm telling you now, if it was y'all's kids, y'all would be out here beating their drums now, finding out what's going on. When you have no investigation, he just kills a homicide, he ain't killed himself. Because that, that, that devil's a liar, okay? So I'm not no preacher, but I'm a man of God. So if it's y'all's kids, y'all would be out there tearing the streets up, finding out what's going on with this stuff here. Is this a bunch of crazy stuff? It's crazy. So I'm just here not to condemn the board or nothing. Y'all know y'all got honor. So I'm just saying, we just need an investigation, a turning. We need, we need some, we need some things to be done. So everybody ain't out here chilling themselves out here. So I'm just coming here as a real man of God and just saying, oh, I just ask y'all, you know, have mercy. We just need an investigation, what happened? We just want to know, because we're no investigation now, okay? See, I'm trying to, so that's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to drown y'all or nothing, you know? We just want somebody to come and say, you know, we just need an investigation, ask some questions, you know? Ain't nobody just going to just, just, just chill themselves, okay? So that's all I'm saying. And so, in, in Jesus's name, thank you.
Thomas Bush, seventeen seventy-eight, seven up South Bend. And I'm here to say that the Mitchell case is the fourth case since ninety-six. That was Nick, Slas Park, Van Quez, and the Mitchell case, four cases. And, you know, look at the way they was, was handling them. You know, I can't understand why in the Mitchell case, the parents asked for his belongings, they didn't get them. And in the G.I. case, they asked for the clothes, they didn't get them. I mean, what's, uh, what's going on? If the case is closed, why can't all this stuff be given up? I mean, you, you're right, uh, freedom of information. We wrote to the sheriff department, here's a couple of letters, all blacked out. I mean, uh, you know, what's going on? This time we got to the bottom of this thing, you know, because people are dying, you know? Thank you.
I'll be shorty, I'll be brief. Lawrence Frank, seven twenty-one, East Dubell Street. First thing I wanted to address, it was spoken of earlier, uh, pertaining to a little box with some tapes returned by the Department of Justice. Apparently the Department of Justice did not find any wrongdoing on United States Code forty-two, subsection one four one four one. And since that has been found, no wrongdoing, then I believe there is violations by the administration of the city of South Bend of the U.S. Code eighteen, subsections two forty-one to two forty-two. And I believe there's also unfortunately, seems to be some wrongdoing by the South Bend Police Department. Uh, Derek's going to take a first one. I just, um, when I'm in reference to United States Code forty-two, subsection two thousand and D, that's required, United States Code forty-two, thirty-seven eighty-nine D. This might need to be addressed, uh, because it all pertains to the same situation dealing with these so-called tapes. Uh, I'm only with that because apparently there's still the same good old voices been going on in the city of South Bend. I'm not going to get any Mr. Robert Swann from it or Mr. Chuck off later, I'll explain all that situation. All I know is this needs to be addressed, or it will be finally done on behalf of the citizen representative of the city of South Bend and will be exercising Article six, section seven, uh, section eight.
South Bend, T L Vax, two seventy-four, Mishawaka, Indiana. I have copies for you guys. There was a press conference that happened a couple, uh, the week before last. Ken Cotter actually, um, presented it. But he made some statements in there because to follow the facts that I'm here to dispute. And I have copies for you and for you too, Mayor. Um, excerpts from this is, I understand that there are a total of three tapes pertaining to Mr. Anderson. These are the video tapes that I requested, the dash cam. Um, every time the lights come on, you know, they start recording. Well, the light was lit up that night, so I don't know how they have three. Now, this came from your city attorney, your interim city attorney, Mayor. Um, the officers who wrote the report in this case were the following. Jeff Walters, Jeff Ryan Nielsen, Jeff Ransberger, Tim Lancaster, and Jamil Elware. Their rank and these titles are attached. A total of fourteen officers were on the scene, excluding Metro Homicide, are not within South Bend jurisdiction. None but the five mentioned wrote reports. Well, can you ask Mr. Cotter why he put up five names on that board that didn't match any one of those names? Um, Skivens was the one that the taser was his. Why didn't he fill out a report? There's problems here in this case. I'm begging you to please do something, have a meeting, do whatever you need to do, get this man out of office because nothing is going to happen when he's sitting in office protecting them. This is a letter that came from your city attorney. She said these five names are the ones that filled out the report. Ken Cotter, so either your city attorney committed forgery, lied, whatever, or Ken Cotter's a liar. Figure it out. Here's your proof.
Anyone else want to speak to the council at this time? We adjourn.